Tonight's meeting of the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission is called to order at 6:30 PM. Commissioner Weeks, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, to the Constitution, to the Constitution of this world.
Recording Secretary, can you please take role?
Chair Lubicik?
Yes, the Chair is absent this evening.
Vice Chair Moharal?
Present.
Commissioner Durant?
Commissioner Durant did not indicate that he will not be here, so we will wait to see if he will be coming in.
Commissioner Rena?
Present.
Commissioner Weeks?
Present.
And Vice Chair, we do have a call.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on cable Channel 3 and our online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each Commissioner will be called upon to speak. This brings us to Item 1, Public Comment. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the Commission, please fill out a speaker card that is available on the back table. Once completed, kindly submit the card to the recording secretary. Speakers will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Recording Secretary, are there any public comments?
No. Vice Chair Moharal, not tonight.
Thank you. This brings us to our second item, Approval of Minutes of the March 8 HPCRC Meeting. Do any of the Commissioners have any comments on these minutes?
No comments.
I have just one comment, and that is, it was the very last discussion item on Commissioner Comments, and that is, yeah, under Commissioner Comments, we had briefly discussed social media platforms for the Commission, and I want to just make sure that is recorded, especially as we go into other subject matters on today's agenda. Thank you.
Vice Chair, we would need a motion and a second with the added comment.
Does anyone move to add the comment?
I motion to add.
One second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments on the minutes? Motion to approve?
I motion.
And the roll call vote. Recording Secretary, please take role.
Vice Chair Moharal?
Present.
Commissioner Rena? Commissioner Weeks? Motion passed.
Thank you. This brings us to Item 3 on our agenda, the Historic Resource Survey Update. We have with us tonight Andrew Goodrich of ARG, who will provide an update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew Goodrich with Architectural Resources Group. It's nice to see you all again. I'm pleased to be here tonight to provide you with an update on Phase 1 of the Citywide Historic Resources Survey that's currently underway. We were last here in March. We've been busy since then, so we just wanted to come back and provide you with an update on what's been done since then. So I wanted to accomplish a few things tonight. First, I wanted to provide an update on what we've been doing since we met with you all in March. Next, I wanted to take some time to discuss the draft survey findings and walk you through the draft survey report. Then I'll talk about what our next steps look like in the process, and at the end, I'll be happy to answer questions and take any feedback you have. So I'll begin by providing just a quick summary. I know you've all heard this before, and I'll try to move quickly, but I just wanted to kind of provide a quick summary of our process, just in case there's anybody tuning in for the first time. So we started the project by reviewing background materials. This included the city's historic preservation ordinance that was updated in 2017, the citywide historic context statement that was prepared in 2021, general and specific plans that had been prepared over time for the city of San Gabriel, and six previous historic resource surveys that were completed in the past by Martin Weil, as well as students from Cal Poly Pomona. Early in the project, we also worked with Sam and her team at City Planning to develop and implement a public outreach strategy. One of the first things that we did was create a dedicated project webpage. This went live in May of 2022. The webpage includes information about the project, including frequently asked questions, a project timeline, as well as ways that information could be shared with the consultant team at ARG. We created a public comment form that people could fill out to share information with our team at ARG. The form was and is available on the project webpage. I believe we received about eight completed forms, which was great. We also had all of the information that was submitted from community members during the historic context statement a few years back, so we had a lot of really good information to work with. In addition, we hosted a community meeting last July. It was here, actually in this room. It was nice to see people in person. We had a turnout of probably about six or seven people, and at this meeting, we were able to introduce the project and our team and answer questions that the public had. In the fall of last year, we conducted a reconnaissance survey of San Gabriel. During the reconnaissance survey, we drove every street. We identified potentially eligible resources and districts. Following the reconnaissance survey, we conducted focused research on each property and district that was preliminarily identified in the reconnaissance survey. Specifically, we looked at building permit records, newspaper archives, sandborne maps, assessor data, original tract maps, really anything we could get our hands on to really understand the development history of each property and each district. Out of this came a list of individual properties and districts that we believed appeared to be eligible for designation. This list was shared with city staff and was presented at this Commission back in March. While all of this was going on, we are also continuing our outreach efforts. Outreach continued over the full course of the project, and what we did was we reached out directly to stakeholders and those whom we knew were interested in the project. We scheduled phone calls or video conferences, like through Zoom, with about six people, and this gave us a chance to really talk some more about properties and places that matter to the community and that we should take into consideration. So I just wanted to share a couple of photos with you. So outreach really did steer us in the direction of several resources that were included in the draft survey findings. These are a few of the properties that were identified by members of the community that were subsequently picked up in the survey. Specifically, outreach helped us identify resources that are sometimes difficult to see from the streets. So this house, it's a little hard to see on the screen there. It's pictured at bottom left. It's kind of hidden behind some foliage. It's easy to drive past, but it was brought to our attention. We did some research. We discovered that it was designed by Scott Quinton, who was a prominent local architect, so this was picked up as an eligible resource. Outreach also helped us identify resources that have social or cultural significance. Often, these are resources that are very humble and are easy to pass by and not really think much about unless you know the story behind them. One example pictured on the right here is Casa Calderón. This is a beloved local business that has been in operation since 1963, which is pretty incredible for a restaurant and is an important part of San Gabriel's commercial heritage and identity. So moving forward, the past few months, really April, May, and into June, we've been working on an intensive-level survey. During the intensive survey, we collected detailed information about individually-eligible buildings and what we've been calling individually-eligible non parcel resources. These are things like signs and bridges and infrastructure that are kind of individual resources but are not located on a legal parcel. They're typically located in the public right-of-way. So we collected information about potential districts as well on a very preliminary level. I'll talk about this a little bit more in a minute. And just once again, I do want to emphasize that all survey data was collected from the public right-of-way. We did not go inside of any buildings. We did not go onto private property at all. This is just purely from what could be experienced from the street. So when we collected our survey data, we used a mobile app that we've been developing over the course of several years called Fulcrum. Pictured here are just a couple of screenshots to give you a sense of what the documentation process looks like on our end. It consists of dropdown menus. This allows us to collect information about a property's architectural style, character-defining features, alterations, and significance. We're also able to directly upload photos and important information like year of construction directly into the database, which is a really helpful tool. The app has been customized so that the dropdown menus that you see here directly correspond to the fields that are required for DPR forms. This saves us a lot of time in the field. It also ensures that all resources are being evaluated consistently and that we're really comparing apples to apples. All of this was packaged into a draft survey report, which is what's before you tonight. The draft survey report includes a description of our methodology and a discussion of our survey findings. The survey report will also include several appendices. Specifically, it will include what we're calling a historic resource inventory. This is a comprehensive list of all historic resources in the city, so designated, individually-eligible non parcel and districts all in one place. Each individual resource and non parcel resource identified during this Phase 1 survey will also have its own DPR form, which will be included as an appendix as well. The DPR forms will include all of the information that was collected in the field survey. We're still working on finalizing these, but a few samples have been included with tonight's package just to give you a sense of the format and the level of detail that goes into these forms. Other appendices will include maps showing the preliminary boundaries of each potential district that was identified. I think this will kind of help put things in perspective for people who are reading the report, as well as copies of the public comment form that was used. So now, I just wanted to take a few minutes to walk through the draft findings of the Phase 1 survey. I guess I just want to preface this by emphasizing that these are very much in draft form, so we're completely open to feedback and recommendations, suggestions, and we're really happy to take a closer look at anything that needs a closer look. So I think to start, as we were reviewing background materials, we found that there are a total of 16 properties in San Gabriel that have already been designated. Three of these are listed in the National Register, so this includes the San Gabriel Mission Complex, La Laguna de San Gabriel, and the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse. Four are listed in the California Register, so this includes the Grapevine Arbor Park and Grapevine Room, the Temple Block, San Gabriel Mission Elementary School, and La Casa de San Gabriel Community Center. The other nine designated resources are houses that have Mills Act contracts. Since Mills Act contracts are typically granted to properties with historical significance and are vetted by the city, we treated these nine houses as locally-designated resources for purposes of the survey. And just a quick note, designated resources, we do note them in the inventory, but we did not reevaluate them because they're already designated, so the hard work is already done. So in addition to these 16 designated resources, the survey identified an additional 115 resources that appear to be eligible for listing. This includes 95 individual properties, nine non parcel resources, which again are those resources that are located generally in the public right-of-way, and 11 districts. And I'll talk a little bit more about each of these categories. So I'll start by talking about individually-eligible resources. Almost all of these consist of individual buildings. In addition, there are a few historic signs that were classified as individually-eligible if they are located on a legal parcel with their own address. This happened in a few cases. So when we kind of crunch the numbers, individually-eligible resources constitute, there's a pretty healthy mix of property types represented here. A little over half, or about 56%, consists of residential properties, and then the remainder is evenly split between commercial and institutional properties. This is pretty consistent with land use and development patterns in San Gabriel, which you all know is predominantly residential, but has, you know, quite a few commercial and institutional uses mixed into the fabric of the city. So the survey picked up 53 individual residential properties. Almost all of them are single-family houses. Two are adobe houses that are very rare vestiges of Spanish colonial and Mexican-era settlements. I should mention that there is a third adobe house that was identified, but because it was not visible from the public right-of-way, it was not evaluated. It is noted in the inventory, and I'll talk a little bit more about that process in a minute. Several others are intact houses that either predate the incorporation of San Gabriel in 1913 or were constructed shortly thereafter. These are generally very rare remaining examples of early residential development patterns from the early period of the city. Several residential resources were evaluated on account of their architecture, typically because they were designed by a notable architect and/or are good examples of an architectural style. Most architecturally significant houses are located in the northern portion of the city, particularly around the Country Club. However, a few are located elsewhere. One example pictured on the right here is called the Prospector. This is located just off of Valley Boulevard, so further south. It's a pretty unique example of a mid-century modern style residential building, and it's also one of relatively few multifamily properties that were identified in the survey. 21 individual commercial properties were identified in the survey as well. Most are retail stores and office buildings that were identified either because they represent important patterns of commercial development or are good examples of an architectural style. One of my personal favorites, to go on a tiny tangent here, is this building pictured on the bottom left. This is on Las Tunas Drive, and it was designed by Smith &amp; Williams, which is a very prominent local modern architecture firm based in South Pasadena. It's a really kind of interesting example of post-and-beam-style architecture applied to a commercial building. There were also several examples of freestanding commercial signs that were identified for reflecting patterns of commercial development, generally after World War II. A few are pictured here on the screen, and they're really distinguished by their distinctive sign faces and neon illumination. This was really intended to attract the attention of passersby when they were driving by on these major commercial corridors. So also, in the realm of commercial resources, the survey identified four significant examples of local, what we're calling, legacy businesses. Three of these are restaurants. They're all pictured here. Claros and Petrillos are both down on Valley Boulevard, and then again Casa Calderón on Las Tunas Drive. All of these have been in business for upwards of 60 years, in some cases, much longer. The fourth resource is the San Gabriel Nursery and Florist. This is another longstanding local business that also has important connections to San Gabriel's Japanese-American community. The remaining 21 individually-eligible resources are institutional properties, and these really fall into one of kind of two broad categories. The first category can be classified as public or civic institutions, and this really does account for most of the institutional resources that were identified. These resources include institutions that are associated with the early years of cityhood, so we have resources like the building we're in right now, San Gabriel City Hall, as well as an electrical substation from the 1920s, the early 1920s, pictured at top right. We also identified several civic facilities that were built to accommodate population growth after World War II, so this includes things like the Public Library, the Fire Station Headquarters at the bottom left, and a handful of elementary school campuses. One particularly interesting example pictured at bottom right is the Lincoln School. This was San Gabriel's de facto segregated school up into the 1950s. It has a very interesting and layered cultural history in addition to being a good example of modern-style architecture, so this was identified as well. And then the second kind of broad category of institutional resources consists primarily of, well, they're private institutions, and they consist primarily of religious buildings. Most of these churches and religious buildings were evaluated as good examples of their respective architectural style, so there's a couple pictured on the screen. And then two additional private institutional resources that were identified are what we are calling design landscapes. This includes the San Gabriel Cemetery, which dates to 1872, which is very, very old, and the San Gabriel Country Club, which dates in 1904. So those were the individually-eligible resources. The second kind of broad category of resources that we looked at were what we call non parcel resources. Again, these are essentially individually-eligible resources. They just happen to not have a legal parcel or an address associated with them. So this includes, we identified nine of these in total, nine non parcel resources. This includes six signs that are located on public property, two historic bridges, and the remnants of Chapman's Mill Race, which is an extremely rare remaining example of infrastructure associated with the Spanish colonial and Mexican eras. And finally, the survey preliminarily identified 11 districts, including nine historic districts and two planning districts, and I'll talk a bit about what that distinction is. So I'll start by addressing historic districts. Historic districts are those that appear to be eligible for designation. This is kind of what most people think of when you think of a district. Once again, the majority of historic districts, 78% in this case, are residential in use. Commercial-institutional uses account for the remainder, the 22% remaining. This again is a reflection of the prevailing Gladius patterns and development patterns in San Gabriel. This probably doesn't come as too much of a surprise, but almost all of the historic districts that were identified are located in the northern portion of the city. I think this has a lot to do with how the city developed over time. Very generally speaking, areas north of Las Tunas Drive were subdivided and developed as kind of these larger, more cohesive units, whereas areas to the south tended to develop more incrementally and in a more piecemeal manner, and this is certainly reflected in the composition of the built environment. As I noted, historic districts were only preliminarily evaluated as part of this Phase 1 survey. So what this means is we identified where we believe the districts are. We drew our recommended boundaries around each district based on what we knew, and we identified which contexts and themes each district appears to be associated with. However, we did not complete an intensive survey of districts. We did not prepare DPR forms. We did not identify contributors and non-contributors at this part of the project. This will be completed at a future date during Phase 2 of the survey. So I just wanted to spend a minute talking a little bit about our process for identifying districts. There's some fun historic images on the screen here, and it's really the, people always ask how we pick districts, how we pick boundaries, and I wish there was like a very clear-cut answer to that, and there's usually not. It's a holistic decision. It's informed by what we observe in the field, so we identified areas during the reconnaissance survey that appeared to us to be very cohesive and had a strong sense of time and place. So that was kind of our starting point. After that, we really drilled down into these areas by finding anything we could find about these areas. So we looked at historic tract maps. We looked at sandborne maps. We looked at newspaper articles. We looked at advertisements. And when we put all these pieces together and we looked at the city's eligibility criteria, which has a minimum integrity threshold of 51%, the boundaries of the district kind of became self-evident to us, and that really informed our decision-making. So the survey also identified two areas that we're calling planning districts. Planning districts are areas that are geographically cohesive. They clearly relate to a historic context. You get a sense of history when you're there. However, they lack the integrity that is needed to qualify as a historic district. They fall short of that 51% threshold. So we identified two of these. The first one is San Gabriel Village, which is pictured on the left. This is an important example of an early planned community dating from 1938 onward. The second is the neighborhood immediately south of the railroad tracks that is often referred to as the El Barrio Neighborhood. Since terminology can change and can change very quickly, we decided to call this area the Central San Gabriel Planning District. We give it a bit of a more benign name just so that we don't run the risk of using any language that could be viewed as insensitive in the future. And then lastly, I wanted to summarize the status codes that we use in the survey. This can get a little technical and jargony. You see lots of numbers and letters, so I just wanted to kind of run through the codes that were most commonly applied in the survey and what they mean. So all resources that were evaluated were evaluated against the city of San Gabriel criteria. Locally-eligible resources are given the status code of 5S3, which just means that it's individually-eligible for local designation. In addition, four resources were also found to be eligible for listing in the National Register and California Register, so this includes the Bovard Wilson Hayes House, the Lopez de Lothar Adobe, the Ortega Vidare Adobe, and San Gabriel City Hall. So in addition to the 5S3 status code, these properties were also assigned the status codes of 3S and 3CS, which just corresponds to the registration programs. A handful of resources were identified in the reconnaissance survey as potentially significant but could not be evaluated, typically because they aren't publicly visible. There was also one instance, the San Gabriel Police Department Headquarters was something that caught our attention. However, it was, and I believe continues to be, under construction, and we couldn't complete the evaluation without really understanding the final results of that work. So in those cases, resources were assigned this status code 7R. This flags them as needing additional review, so they are identified as a potential resource. However, the 7R code just indicates that additional research and analysis is needed. And then finally, the code of 6L was used for planning districts. 6L simply means that the resource is ineligible but merits special consideration in local So I'll wrap up by discussing next steps. So this image here just shows where we are in relation to the overall project schedule. The red arrow at the bottom indicates where we are now. So as you can see, we are approaching the finish line, however, we are not quite there So these are what our next steps are. We're here presenting tonight. We submitted a draft of the survey report for review. Again, this is by no means set in stone. We're very eager to hear feedback and suggestions on how we can make this better, if it needs to be. If there are properties that were not surveyed that you or members of the public or city staff would like us to consider adding, we'd be more than happy to take a closer look at those. Conversely, if there are properties on the lists that you're seeing and you're wondering, "Why is this on here?", we can take another look at those, too. Our goal is really to make sure that the final work product here is as comprehensive and accurate as possible. and accurate as possible. So once we get feedback, then we will work on finalizing the report and appendices. And as mentioned, Phase II of the survey, which will include a more detailed evaluation of each district, including the identification of contributors and non-contributors, will be completed at a future date when resources and funding permit. So thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions, happy to take any feedback you have. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew Goodrich. This was a wonderful presentation. It's very exciting for me especially, I think, I think for all commissioners, the city overall. And it's crucial that residents take an interest in this because there is so much added value to our city when we designate locations, signs, districts. And I think it's very important, and I'm so happy that we're at this point and we're moving forward with this. So again, thank you. I asked commissioners if you have any, anyone comment?
Yeah, I would just like to say, Andrew, thank you for AGR, all the effort you guys are putting into this. It's really inspiring to see how this thing is developing, and the depth that you guys are getting into is just really fascinating. And hats off to ARG, I believe it's the initials if I'm correct. But yes, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for the team.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rena?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just want to applaud you and your group for the work that you've done, especially in the short amount of time considering everything that we had to do with Los Angeles. It's inspiring, and I'm really looking forward to the final product that we can put forth to the public.
Andrew, thank you so much for this report and presentation. I'll be doing a deeper dive and reviewing and providing comments that'll get back to you. But a couple of questions that I just had really quickly on the historic districts. By the way, I really relied on the context that ARG prepared last year. This has been super helpful with me, you know, in design review, and I'm leaning on the preliminary findings every step of the way with this survey, so I'm anxious to get the final product as well. But on the districts, I just wondered, we had several design review projects come up that caused us to really look at those preliminary boundaries that you have identified, and I just wondered if really kind of taking one more peek at the boundaries is something that you anticipate doing in Phase II, particularly, like you said, in the north. Those, I can't remember all the streets, like Segovia and those in that area, you know, there seems to be like a little bit of a gap, and I understand your rationale. I mean, I'm doing the same work, so I get it. And you probably have thought of it, but I'm wondering if another peek at the boundaries is part of the scope of work for Phase II?
Thanks for the question. Yes, that's our vision, is, this was kind of a first pass, if you will, at the districts. And then I believe during Phase II, you know, if we had a magic wand and we could do whatever we wanted, we would really do a deeper dive into each district, confirm the boundaries. They might expand, they might contract in some cases, and then move ahead with documenting each resource within the boundaries.
Okay, great. And yeah, and thank you for doing the preliminary look in this phase. It's been very, very helpful to me. And I do have a few properties in mind that I will, I'll just reach out to when I do my review or pass that through staff so that I can, we can make sure they were landed on your list already, or you can take a look. And then also a question for pushing something to Phase II on your 7R properties. If you did say that access was the primary reason that they weren't evaluated, if any of those are city-owned, if access can be provided, can we push evaluation, include evaluation of those in Phase II possibly?
Yes, I believe so. I'm thinking, I think there were only four resources that were given a 7R. One, I'm kind of going by memory here, I believe one was the Church of Our Savior, which is partially visible from the street, but you really have to get in the property to understand the nuances of it. So that would be one, that's private. There was the police station, which is under construction, so by the time that Phase II happens, hopefully the work will be done. And then I'd have to look at the other two, but I believe they're all privately owned. But yes, I think if we could get access to those properties, we could absolutely complete evaluations for those.
Okay, that would be great, because as you know, if we don't do it with this pass, then that'll fall to the property owner. If there's a future project, it would be just so much more helpful to have that evaluation piece. And then, let's see, I think I had one last, oh, one last question for you is, you know, sometimes context work and survey work, they feed off of each other, and we, of course, did the context first, which is appropriate. But now that you have done the survey work, did you identify any potential amendments to the themes that were identified in the context or any sort of like periods of significance possibly? Any results of the survey cause you to take another look at the context and recommend amendments?
Generally speaking, we were very pleasantly surprised, I guess, to see that the context really aligned with what we saw in the field in almost all of the cases, which is really great, because sometimes there is that gap between what's, you know, theoretically there versus what's actually on the ground. There are two areas that come to mind for me. One, there were a couple of architectural styles that we found, and this might come up again in the district evaluations, that are not explicitly addressed in the context statement. One of them being, there's kind of this really interesting prairie-style house adjacent to the country club, and I believe it's the only one in the city. There's one out of two. Okay.
There's two, yeah, that I found.
Yeah, so I think that's something that, you know, we might consider adding at some point. It's not, it wouldn't dramatically change the substance of the context statement. The second area that, it's kind of on the flip side, I guess, is there is a context related to early industrial development. We did not find any eligible resources under that theme. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's not something hiding out there somewhere, but, you know, I think that might be the other only area where there was maybe a bit of a, I don't want to say discrepancy, maybe a bit of a gap between the context and the fieldwork.
Right, well, great. That speaks to the good work done on the context, so kudos to you and your team. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair, we did receive comments from Chair Lupicich, and so I will read it verbatim as follows. I want to thank the ARG team for the good work that they have done on the inventory of historic resources. I appreciate the narrative and feel that it follows nicely from the context statement. The chair did have some questions about the particular resources that are not included in the survey, and would just request for more information about the determinations that were made. And the chair provided six combination of comments with questions, first being residential properties on Chelsea Way. These are stately homes located on a private drive that extends south of Roses, where these homes evaluated and what determinations were made. Second, community health education center at 261 South Juniparo Sierra Drive. I was surprised that this resource was not included. Its interior holds true to the construction and function of women's clubs that were a part of the fabric of so many communities, and can the HPCRC have an explanation of its exclusion from the survey? Third, triangular apartment complex bordered by West Live Oak, Juniparo Sierra Drive, South San Marino. These are apartments, these apartments are, have an interesting look at early high-density housing in San Gabriel, and again, what determinations were made regarding these apartments. Fourth, sign at 905 East Las Tunas Drive, Dr. Norge Equip Laundry and Cleaners. This is a sign that I have previously raised as a potential resource. Was it evaluated, and what determinations were made? Fifth, explanation of survey of West Ramona Boulevard along the 10 freeway. There are groupings of small humble bungalow homes along the three streets north of the 10 freeway where these evaluated. Could they be included in a planning district? They speak to the humble beginnings of San Gabriel and its extension towards Los Angeles as the city boomed in the late 19th century. The last six comment. Other potential Mills Act homes. Does the survey provide for homes that may seek a Mills Act contract? And based on the survey completed by the Cal Poly students, many of the Mills Act contracts we have in the city were created. The survey seems more limited in scope when it comes to identifying potential Mills Act homes, and is that the case? And these comments and questions have been provided to ARG, and we will provide responses to these comments and questions.
Thank you. Any other comments? At this time, we open this for public comment. Are there any public comments on this matter?
No, Vice Chair Mahalo, not at this moment.
Thank you. It is now 7:12. The time for public comment on this item is now closed. This brings us to, oh, I want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
I mean, Andrew. Andrew, again, work continues, but it's very much appreciated.
Thank you all so much.
This brings us to item four on our agenda, Certified Local Government CLG Application Update and Proposed Zone Text Amendment for Cleanup Items to be Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Ordinance. This will be reported by Jennifer Mermillian.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Mahalo. I'm offering the update on the CLG grant application, and where we are is still in the revision phase of the HP ordinance. So, you know, we did make progress since the last meeting but aren't quite to the finish line. At this time, the document is fully revised, and a clean copy and a copy that shows track changes revisions has been offered to the state for like a final comprehensive review. That was requested by the state because, you know, once we got to the full end of the document, there was quite a lot of revisions, and so it does seem in order that a comprehensive review is what's needed, just to make sure that we've got everything. So that's in their hands right now, and we're expecting comments back on that at any time. And then we did mention that we'll be taking the document to the National Park Service for an informal review, just a quick review to make sure that the revisions would be acceptable if it was submitted, if we did adopt the revisions and it was submitted, simply to save the time of the commission and city council in considering and making those revisions. So on the advice of the state, we'll determine if we'll make that informal review request to the National Park Service first before it comes back to the commission or after, but I think at this point, we're looking at before we bring it to the commission, which is a little bit different than the last time we reported, so just to let you know that. So that's where we are, and I'm sorry, I didn't recognize the other item may not be mine to provide an update on.
No, it's been covered. It's the status of the application and it resulting in required amendments to the existing
Thank you very much for that, for that update. Commissioners, any comments?
No comment.
Comment? Thank you.
A vice chair comment was provided by Chair Lupicich. Again, reading verbatim, I would like to re-irritate, I don't, usually I can say the word, that at our last meeting, the HPCRC was interested in increasing the number of meetings from four to six, so that is something that staff has noted and will come back with as one of the proposed amendments.
Are there any public comments on this matter?
No, Vice Chair, we do not.
Thank you. It is now 7:16. The time for public comment on this item is now closed. And no other comments from commissioners, okay? This brings us to item five on our agenda, Development of Our Annual Work Plan.
Yes, Vice Chairman members of the commission, it was, has been previously expressed, and most recently at the March 8th, the prior Preservation Commission meeting, an interest in developing an annual work plan to assist in tracking programs and projects that come before the Preservation Commission, either for review or discussion, potential workshops. What staff has put together is a table that's included as an attachment, really summarizing the duties of the Preservation Commission per the Preservation Ordinance, and it provides, it outlines the tasks per identified in the code. It identifies some of the actions that has been taken, and then also the blank spaces indicating that programs to be provided, and also timelines, whether they've been accomplished, ongoing, in process, or to be planned in the future. So this is, as indicated in the report, is the start to the conversation, really to outline the duties of the commissions and some projects for the commission to consider placing on future agendas for the commission to discuss. And as previously mentioned, a proposed amendment will be to increase the number of meetings, so this will also assist with the continuity of some of the discussions and the projects reviewed, and as the Historic Resource Survey, potentially leading to an inventory if it gets to that point, and further work within that realm. Hopefully, a lot of applications and projects will be coming before the commission, and then also any workshop or discussion items that the commission would like to place, and staff with the assistance of Jen can provide some additional workshops. So far, a couple of have been provided on the Mills Act and also on the Secretary of Interior Standards, the case study provided by Jen on the convenable. So those are just examples of some of the workshops that have been provided, but this is to get the commission to start thinking about other items that the commission would like to see, and we will continue to build on this. Unlike the annual work plan that is required of other commissions, this does not have to go before the city council for approval or any type of action. It can be something that is ongoing that the Preservation Commission can continue to build on and to use to just keep track of the items that come to the commission.
Thank you for that. Is this, is this something that, since you said it doesn't have to go before the council, is this something that can be enacted?
Yes.
Active immediately?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Weeks, do you have any comment?
No, no comments at this time.
Commissioner Urena?
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Were there any comments from Chair Lupicich?
Yes, thank you for that, Vice Chair. A comment was provided, and it reads as follow. I appreciate the work that staff did in drawing out the work our commission does in relations to the ordinance. I would like to request that we add some workgroup tasks related to bringing forward district or site nominations based on the results of the Historic Resource Survey. The mission district seems like an important first, but there are other resources that also merit concerted attention and work.
Oh, Recording Secretary, are there any public comments?
No, Vice Chair, not at the moment.
Okay. It is now 7:21. The time for public comment on this item is now closed. Any other comments from the commission? Okay, this brings us to item six on our agenda, Staff Items. Okay, this brings us to item six on our agenda, staff items.
The only update from staff would be just to, if the commission can assist with letting the community know about that the survey, the draft survey is available for public review and commenting. So if the commission can assist with that so that more of the community can access the document, again, it is available on the dedicated webpage. It's a link that's provided. Anybody who needs hard copies, city staff will be happy to provide those as well. So just want to encourage as many members of the public to view the document and to provide public feedback because that is what the, the document is, is for.
Thank you. Commissioner Weeks, any comments?
No comments beyond that. That's a great point, so thank you.
Commissioner Urena?
No, no comment.
Thank you to city staff for that. This brings us now to item seven on our agenda. Are there any commissioner comments regarding conference or meeting reports?
No additional comments from me on this item.
This is also the time for commissioners to report on conferences or meetings that they have attended?
Yes, Vice Chair, Chair Lupicich did provide a comment for this, for this item, and it states as follows. I would like to encourage my fellow commissioners to be on the lookout for the August fundraiser hosted by the San Gabriel Historical Association. I also hope that staff could provide an update on the state of the MOU and budget allocation for the Hayes House. With that, staff can provide that update at this time. It was a request that was approved by the city council. What we are waiting for at this time would be for the fiscal period to start and then for the invoice to come in, but that was an item that was approved by the city council to assist specifically for repairs of the roof at the, at the museum and then also for very specific repair items at the Hayes House, the flooring and some handrails. So assisting the Historical Association with some of those improvements and hopefully extend the condition of the Hayes House and the museum.
Thank you. That's very good news. I have one, one, just one comment, and I'll circle back to a social media platform once again. And I, as we're talking about, you know, making the community aware of this historical survey, I think it would be a great platform to, I mean, we don't have to go into detail, but even sharing some of the images that were shared tonight, it's quite intriguing and exciting because we walk our neighborhoods, we drive our city, through our city, we recognize those locations, yet we don't know much of the background, right? And I think this brings, brings, you know, and it brings people in, they're interested kind of, it kind of, I'm sure they, they were also intrigued by it, right? These are little gems all throughout our city. Some of them are right on our street, down the street, around the corner. And again, I think it's important, important to get that information out. We can try, I can try my neighbors', you know, emails, but if we can get it on a social media platform and occasionally just share photos just to keep it going, I think that would be wonderful. Okay. Okay, this brings us to item eight on our agenda. The meeting is now adjourned. It is 7:26. To the regular meeting of the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission on September 13th, 2023 at 6:30 PM at City Hall. That will be our next meeting.
Yes, Vice Chair, that would be the next regular meeting, but potentially there may be a special meeting as the resource survey makes more progress and gets to a final version. It may warrant a special meeting date, but the regular meeting would be in September.